The delay tonight will be just discussing. Code update, we won't be taking any public comment. Everyone's welcome to to watch and we'll have plenty of time to make comments at our public hearing. So Fran or Marie or whoever would like to start this up with us. We're going to short term rentals and.
Fran, do you want to take it?
I mean, we have Matt on the call tonight, Dave, because the comments are theirs. So I'm looking at the planning board, the first comment that they had was in 100 dash one regarding the purpose statement and they suggest a, as Matt says in his note, a more robust. Purpose statement and they and they quote something from Reinbeck. It seems fine. I don't know if anyone has read it or not read it.
Well, Matt. Hi, how are you?
Well.
Yeah, I would. I would agree. We should put something more in there.
Okay, so should we? We quote directly from from Reinbeck. Is that okay?
Yeah, okay with me.
Okay, we'll change that.
And basically that just, you know, just sets the stage that, you know, this is what you're trying to solve to. So I think the more words you put behind it. Then that, you know, the more you have to explain to residents why you're doing what you're doing or to challenges while you did what you did, right?
The next, the next question Matt has is in 100 dash three, no more than 38 registered as STRs. And the question is, how do we arrive at this number and Hank, and how would it be explained and defended? I wrote it, and this was just from memory, and I don't remember exactly. I thought it was a percentage of the properties. I know we had counted up how many properties are currently on Airbnb. But I thought we also took a percentage of the available properties in the R1 and B1 district or something to that effect, Dave. I'm gonna pass that.
Yeah, I think we did two things. One, we came with 38, the way we. I guess we have to go to to one of the the issues that we had the hardest time with, which was actually. Defining how to separate them and how to how to keep it so that no, no one area would have too many short term rentals. And so way back, I don't even know when we started with, I was trying to define blocks and have blocks. I thought that'd be the way to go. So the problem was always defining. How to separate them, and it didn't seem like there was anything that worked that well. So then we just, then I think we, this evolved into us going street by street. Seeing how many, how many houses are, you know, how many properties were on each street and deciding from that, what would, what would be? I think the number which we think people would be comfortable with, and this would address the the neighborhood. Concerns that people had lack of neighborhood and noise and people investing and and just, you know, having more and more SDRs.
At some point, you came to a calculation of. A separation of of seven properties. I'm still not clear how you got to to seven properties, but I think you began with a percentage and then worked, began with a percentage of overall. And then work toward a separation of seven properties, and that's, I don't remember how you got to the seven properties, which then led us to.
I don't remember doing seven properties. I think the problem was when we started the properties and how that works, if you look at a a street like Parrot, they're close together. So if you go, you know, four properties there versus four properties on another street. You know, there's more, you know, there's, you know, closer. You know, I just seemed like there to be more short term rentals in that area, you know, or more congestion of short term rentals. Regardless of the number of properties, if you're looking at the area itself, like the slow length of part of Parrot Street might be the same as Garden Street, but there's probably twice as many houses or whatever. So. I don't remember talking about seven properties. Maybe that was the way that we were going to try to separate them that way. I don't know. It's just been a lot that's been said over the course of the last months. The way we ended up with the 38 was it the streets that had, you know, that we thought we could separate them and have numbers on, you know, that wouldn't make it so there were too many in any area. Came out to like our calculations, which is in our in our list, and that was 38. 38 also represents, I think, around 5% of the total properties. And in a lot of the short term rentals, I looked at 5%, not a lot. There were there were a number of them that had 5% was kind of their numbers. So that seemed like a number to go with.
That's, I think that's a great explanation. I mean, you really, it just has to be something that's kind of, you know, not arbitrary. That, you know, when somebody questions it, and I think that's, you know, it's fine. You got to start somewhere. Unfortunately, now this stuff has been on the books long enough to be challenged to know what's going to work and what's not going to work in the long term. So I think the more conservative you are, the better. But I think, yeah, if you're saying a percentage of the overall properties, because it has a negative effect on residential life. Sounds good to me.
I read the, I read the Nelsonville law again today, and they they began with 5% of properties and but they did not get into limiting how close. They could be together simply, simply 5% of the stock.
I think the problem with that is, is if it's five, I mean, that's not going to address if there are issues. I don't know how they stated the reason for their law, but if they, one of the reasons is, you know, people are concerned about losing the neighborhood feel, then well, you could very easily, just by saying 5%, not restricting where they are, lose that feel.
So they stated. In part of their purpose and legislative intent. To preserve long term rental housing stock to limit the number of short term rental units to ensure the continuing availability of short term, excuse me, long term. Rental housing to residents of the village and protect the character of the community to set parameters on the use of local residential property. To ensure the survival of quality of life of full time residents. So we simply became. We simply got more specific, and I, I think that one of our goals was. A laudable goal. I don't know how it would translate if we were to move away from. Well, my concern is we spend a lot of time talking about how many, many blocks are very dense and that. Impacts at rear yards can be as much of an impact, if not more than properties across the street. So just thinking about. If I think of as an example, the house behind me is an air isn't as a short term rental. I'm in a short term rental. That makes a very different neighborhood experience for the person on the next side. So if we, if we think linearly, one of the discussions we had, Matt, was how to, how to think about neighborhoods in the round. And how to think about properties as they, but on all sides, as so many do. In a compact village.
Yeah. No, I think it's it's a reasonable goal, and it's a difficult one to solve. So I think if you do something that's just objective. You know, I think you can, you know, you can just, look, if it's the density and the clustering that then makes the problem worse, then maybe it's just, you know, it's a measurement. I know Reinbeck used a measurement, I think 250 feet. But you've, you're already limiting them. Once you limit the number, right? So if you're saying you're gonna take 5% of the stock and allow 38, sounds reasonable to me, right? Because those of us that like, you know, sit on these standing boards, you know, we have to, we have to then live with the code that the legislative body sends down and explain it. Not, not unlike, you know, selling parking spaces that don't exist, right? You know, so we, you know, so we, you know, we kind of live with this stuff where it's kind of living and breathing. So, you know, when you explain this stuff to folks, I think it's good to, you know, look, I think if you say 5% of the housing stock, that's 38. But I think the more you get into, and this is, you know, this is where we start to move into areas of, you know, get advice from the village attorney, but the more you get into, it's harder to explain something. I guarantee you, the more it is harder to defend yourself in court because of that, right? So to the extent that you can just, you know, the funny thing is, when when our board was having the discussion, I said, you know, the easiest thing, the most defensible thing to do is outlaw them, right? None. We don't want any, right? Nobody, I don't think you could ever lose in court for that. But we, you know, so we want to go somewhere, you know, north of that, right? And to allow some of them. I think the one statement you just meant, which I don't think is in Reinbeck's, who I think, which I think is important to put in the purpose statement is to preserve long term rentals and owner occupied. That that's a very important purpose, right? Because that's really what's killing a lot of these communities. Lake Placid just got, just got hammered.
I think like in Reinbeck, it's Reinbeck has, I think the. Number is 15.
15. Yeah. So I think that, look, I think I don't, all this, all this to say, I appreciate what you guys are trying to do, which is trying to get to perfect, but I think that you, if you get your biggest goals out of the way now and know that it's fully defensible, right? 38, you're inspected. We know what you're doing. Everything's above the board, you know, and, you know, and you, you know, you do the lottery, assuming the lottery is, the lottery seems weird to me only because of a land use thing where your land use is granted by chance, right? But if, you know, if lawyers say that's legal, I don't know. This stuff is so new, I don't really know what the, you know, if the courts have even opined on it yet. But I think that if you get your big stuff covered, I think you've done a really great job for the village, which is what you want to do. I would just caution against trying to get it perfect, right? You know what I mean?
So the 5%.
The other thing with the. Go ahead, Marie.
The 5% number.
I was just gonna say, the other thing with 38 was, we did go through as and find as many short term rentals that were in operation illegally right now, and that was probably south of 38.
25, I think, about 25.
Is that all?
No, 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 no.
That's not right. I saw like.
Sorry.
It was more than 38 because a number of short term rentals are not advertised in Airbnb.
Understood.
Identified places that weren't. The point I was gonna make was one of the questions from the planning board was why only R1 and B1? If you look at the code right now, I2, there, there is no structures, there are no structures in I2. There are a few structures in I1, but I don't think we want to identify I1 as an applicable zone for short term rentals. We eliminated B2, B3, B4, and B4A. B2, because it's supposed to be business, B3, because it's supposed to be business, B4, because it's senior housing and B4A, because it's Butterfield. So that left us with B1 and R1. R1 is fairly straightforward. B1 is very straightforward as well, except that all the units below the tracks are B1. So B1 is everything below the tracks and Main Street up to a certain point. And then R1 is all of these owned R1 districts in the village. And that.
Could I ask how we jump down to how we jump down to this when we're others?
Yes. So the, the reason we got to 38 was that 38 is five less, slightly more than 5% of the R1 and B1 structures in the village.
I wasn't saying that we went to the, this is how we came up with 38. I went through those pretty closely. I'm not sure if we're, you know, maybe people know other people that have short term rentals. But I looked pretty closely at the ones that were for rent there, and I don't think there were too many more than 38. So I'd love to see the list of the 50 or above 38 that everyone seems so confident it is. Because I couldn't find that. I went through every, every, you know, short term rental in the village that I could find. So I'd be surprised. Anyway, I just thought.
Airbnb, so they probably be on Airbnb and VRBO.
Yeah.
And the other one went out of business.
And they, and those that are listed with private, that are privately listed, for example, West Point.
Right, but you don't know that what that number is.
I know that.
I mean.
Well, we got, we got to 38. I mean, we, we got to 5% of the properties and then we, and then we justified it by looking street by street. We wanted them not to be congested. We wanted them to be one or two on a street at the most. And so, you know, the number worked out for us after we did all the, all the math.
We wanted to, as I recall, part of the discussion was not. Ending up at a point where. The short term renters rentals were clustered either across the street, next to each other, behind, or clustered at an intersection. Which at some point, when you began with the, when I arrived, that starter number was there, the 25. And at some point, then, when we began talking about separation, somehow we got to a number of seven, seven properties.
I don't think behind was ever a factor.
Well, what I'm saying is we never felt that, that was, we were, we were talking about behind and never finding sort of a, never finding a precise way to address. How you would deal with back to back, but, but, but the seven, the sevens, the seven somehow ended up spacing out on street sufficiently that you wouldn't have. Multiple on a single street or at an intersection, but we still have the question of rear to rear.
Now, we never, shall we? So we, I don't think we ever addressed rear to rear.
That's what I'm saying. We never did. And I think that's.
I don't think it ever came up. I know that across the street. Across the street came up. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I raised rear to rear a number of times because that's a concern that I have.
Okay, so in the last four months, rear to rear has been raised.
Okay, and I'm saying it's something that I think we should, as we work toward conclusion, think about.
Okay, next, the next comment, if we can move on. Stephanie, it's, it's connected to 100 dash 3B. STR permit shall be decided by public lottery. The comment is the constellation of lottery permit term, number of permitted stays, maximum required stays, limited number of permits available and restricted location. Taken together, create an undue burden on the property own owner, I believe she means to own, to accessing lawful property rights. And I'm not, I mean, I know that there's a lot of burdens here because this is a law, but that's. I'm not too sure.
I'm not sure what the accessing lawful property rights means there.
Stephanie's on. I mean, I can speak to her, but if, or if she wants to speak. She's, she's basically just saying access to the, access to the use, right? That you kind of have to go through all these hurdles. I think I had put that in my February memo to you before I got the full board opinion was, man, are you really just kind of weeding people out? Because the access to use and the, and the chance element. Are so, are so unpredictable. And then on top of that, then you, at the end of it, you get a one year permit and that's it, right? Would you do all these things just to, just to rent, to make, to prepare your home for one year, right? I think you might, you know, move, you know, you might, you might be weeding people out. That may not be a bad thing, right? But anyway, when, when you look at, when you talk to a planning board, we obviously talk about. You know, that we look at things from like, you know, Euclidean zoning where there's a district and something is allowed in the district and you can have a predictable outcome, right? Whereas this is very, very different. And I think the courts will opine later as to, you know, if this, you know, Reinbeck did a lottery, so we'll, we'll see how that goes.
I think the thing with lottery, though, the thing with lottery or any way that we do this, I think that the thing is, if you go to, well, how would you do this? How do you give people? How, how does someone get a permit? If you have all the, if you have restrictions or you have to have it, you know, you have to have it inspected, whatever. How do you? How do you do it where it's not really chance? Is it whoever gets there first, you know, first come, first served?
I think, I think, I think you're, I think you're on to something, Dave. I think anything is going to be considered chance, no different than like a closed, a closed bid deadline, right? Everybody gets their bids in, you know, and, you know, you know, so something like that. But yeah, and I'm sure John can, you know, tell you whether or not he thinks it's defensible. I, I, I think a lottery is probably, is, is probably not a bad thing, but when you, but when you look at the lens of what a planning board does and looks at land use, it's obviously a little kind of wonky for us. So don't, you know, take what we say on that with a grain of salt, right? That we just, you know, that we look at things, you know, to provide a consistent and predictable outcome, right?
I mean, we, we talked about, you know, first come, first served, but we didn't think that was fair to people who are working. Or if you say, you know, you've got to have it in by Monday at noon. You know, and the office opens at nine or something, you know, I have to be in New York, I have to be in the city, or I have to work, or, you know, how does that, how does any of that work? That was. So the lottery was the easiest thing we could do. Everybody get your thing in by a certain date and then we'll pull. I understand that as we move on. To the next, to the next question, which is E in the same area, one year seems to be a very short period for all the hoops we have to jump to. And I'm not, I'm not averse to changing that to a two year permit, or maybe we could opt for a one year permit at this price and a two year permit at this price.
Sorry, Fran, but what we had discussed was that because this was the first year we were doing it, we wanted to start with a one year permit to see how the process went. And then it could be changed in the future. That's, that's why we, that's what we discussed last time.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's good.
And that's the same counter for special use permits in the code as well.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to pass on Stephanie's comments and move on. And the one year permit, we're going to keep for the first year is what we had agreed on. We good with that? Everyone.
I think, I think that we're, this is a trial. It will, it won't be perfect, but this, it's a best attempt.
Because the other thing was if we are sticking with the lottery system, people who don't get pulled then have an opportunity sooner. Rather than closed out of the market.
I do see the argument that Matt makes, however, that, you know, it's. It might be a distance incentive for someone to invest in a, a property to become an STR and then only have that business income permitted for one year, and you may or may not have the opportunity to return, get return on that investment the following year. I think I do understand that argument.
Part of this is we're trying to discourage people from investing in properties. Become an STR.
Even as a, even if, if a person were a homeowner. Investing in, I don't know, new furniture for a bedroom that would be rented out or new new patio furniture that would be used by guests when they were using the house. And it could, it could be a variety of things. It's still an investment.
Right. But the only investment they have to make is that they can pass inspection. They don't actually, they're not required to do any of those other things.
That's true.
Okay.
I would think after one year, I'm not opposed to two years, but I think we should see how it runs the first year, because it's a trial.
It might be too, just as a thought, the way you, the way you document this, that maybe like you do a fee schedule separate, you do a permit and permit length and cost separately. So you don't have to go back and amend the code.
It'll all be in the master fee schedule.
Okay, there you go.
So we don't have to.
You got it.
Okay. In F, the question of R1 and B1, Stephanie says, is this distinction equal access to property rights with under the law? We just talked to them. Marie just talked about why we went with the R1 and B1 zoning districts.
So, so Fran, could I ask you a question or ask a question in general on that point? Matt, do you think that, and Stephanie's on, you said, right?
Yep.
The point you raised there, do you think that clarifying language that describes the rationale within the code would, would alleviate the concern you raised there?
I think.
I don't think you can put a rationale in the code.
Well, a description of.
Of what the, yeah, what the problem, I think you do, I agree. I think you do need to say, why, why are they, why is it a compatible use in R1, but not R3? Why is it a compatible use in R1, but not I1, right? I think we might have Airbnbs in I1 now. You know, so I think you're, somebody's going to eventually ask that question. So you need to be ready with the answer. I, I think the thing for Butterfield was, oh, it's a condo, so they might have their own, you know, their own restrictions. So I would look to John to kind of say, what, how do we need to explain how we pick these districts where this use could be allowed? Right? Because, because it are, the R1 use is available in any district. So you're actually, you're greatly restricting that use, right? You know, because it's an R1 use. Or maybe it's not. Maybe it's basically, it's a new use, right? That it's a.
Yes, we're not making, we're not changing the zoning.
No, 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 not the zoning, no.
Right. So this is just saying short term rentals will only be allowed in those two districts.
Yes. So I think that the more you explain, the better. Yeah.
I would, I would not put it here if any place I would put it in the intro.
Right, or, yeah.
Or the purpose.
I think, yeah, anywhere we think it's having a negative effect on a district, right?
And stating it as such.
Yeah, because it, because it is, right? It changes the residential life of the district.
And the per, the purpose of the, of the new law addresses that negative impact.
Yep.
Okay. Next one goes to the one off street parking space math. You don't know how much we agonize over this one.
Sorry about that. Listen, these are just comments. You don't have to go through them one by one. I mean, I, I'm willing to spend as much time as you want, but I don't want to derail you guys. You know, obviously, we, like we said, we come with our own lens to these problems.
Well, if we can get through it, then we're, we're ready to go almost with a public hearing, just, just adjusting. So that would be, I mean, my thoughts, it's worth it to go through it.
I just know that we, we have a big house around the corner from us. They're not all coming in one car. Not with the number of people that can sleep in that house. So we already have a parking problem, but if it's, you know, if it's problematic, I don't imagine it's really going to be a huge issue with 38 properties, some of them being small, some of them coming in on the train, some of them, you know. And having, you know, different, different vacancy periods. And so I don't imagine that the impact is really going to be all that great. Even if you don't have sufficient parking, but you know, if you ask the planning board, we'll say, provide enough parking for the use, you know.
Matt, the thing that, the thing that I worry about, and no one else seems to share this concern, but I'll throw it out, is I worry about yards getting used, getting turned over to parking areas.
And yeah.
On the neighborhood too.
Yep. Lake Placid put that right in their code, that you're not paving the yard.
Well, I would, that's something that I feel strongly about and would like to see incorporate in this is that yards can't be paved to make parking in some, in some form.
But that, that doesn't belong here. That belongs in zoning.
So where does the lake, how does it relate in Lake, on the Lake Placid code, Matt?
I don't remember. I'll send it to you. I'll take a look at it really quick, actually, while you're talking, but I do remember that.
You know, what of municipalities, this chapter is in the zoning chapter. So it may be right in there, which is where we, we pulled this out from.
Zoning, the zoning, the zoning chapter has no prohibition. Leaving any area of your property to provide parking.
Well, I think that's something we need to talk about and consider.
I think you can't just do it for this. I mean, how would you defend that and say, okay, if you have, you know.
I think, I think it's something we want to consider everywhere, that the loss, the loss of, of yards and small lots to, to pervious areas for parking, that's a huge character issue.
That's for, after the code update, when we want to redo them.
Well, we're, we're looking at 134 at some point, so.
I know, but.
I, I don't, I don't think everyone shares your concern on that.
But anyway, Matt, if you, I'll look at Lake Placid too, but if you find it first, I'd love to see how they, how they manage it.
Yeah, and it might have been cried off street. There is a whole section on required off street parking.
Now, as it turns out, the R1 district does require two off streets parking spaces for every lot. That obviously has not been implemented on many lots. But I think that Dave would, would say he was surprised at the number of off street parking spaces that exist right off of, of the streets off of Main Street, below the right, below the light and above the tracks. It's, it's quite eye opening.
Yeah, I mean, probably most.
I think we should move on.
Okay. The next comment on the one off street is, what is the rationale? And it's saying 101B cannot be fulfilled unless the village actively requires no more than one car per STR visit and actively enforces a requirement that the STR visitor park the one car and the one off street parking space, and that makes sense. You know, is this practical? Can we enforce this?
One of the requirements for the inspection is that to pass the inspection is that you have to have one off street parking space. So the, the enforcement of that, that the fact that there is an off street parking space will be performed prior to the permit being issued.
This, this doesn't say one additional off street parking space. It just says one. So if I have one already for my home, then I'm fine.
You, you can use that, yes.
Okay, next question is why only 60 nights? Why in residential districts, but I think we, we had determined five nights a month. You know, not that it has to be divided that way, but no more than five nights a month would be plenty for residential districts so that you're not renting it out on a regular basis. I don't know if anybody remembers anything else on that.
I, I remember being for, for quite a few more than that. I, I think I went with the majority on this one, but I, I think most, most laws I've seen is probably about a third of the year. It's, it's definitely 100 and some.
Yeah, we had talked about 90 days and I, I wouldn't be opposed to more than 60, but I'm open.
All right. So.
I'm sorry, are we discussing that now and trying to reach agreement?
No, I'm just putting a note for now.
Okay.
Unless you want to reach an agreement.
I think it should be, I think it should be raised. I mean, I think another thing is we thought when we go to public hearing, we're going to hear, you know, pushback on whatever, and we could change it then. So if you can, if you want to do that and stay with that, I'm pretty sure that's how we. So if you can, if you want to do that and stay with that, I'm pretty sure that's how we ended up on this. But, okay, let's just go to the public hearing. Let's see what people have to say on that. And I'm sure we'll get pushed back.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the whole objective here is that you don't want your next door neighbor vanishing every single weekend and a bunch of strangers coming in and living in the house next to you very, very frequently, which was, as Fran said, five nights a month. So do, do we want to leave it and wait? I mean, you may get, you're going to get pushed back on both sides. You know, you're going to get those who are saying, we want more, and you're going to get those who are living next to it, who are going to say 60 is probably too much.
I would leave it for the moment and, and see what public response is. I was comfortable with a higher number as well.
Okay, so.
Leave it moving.
Okay. And then the question is.
Buy money on hire on that one.
All right. Question is rentals, minimum of two nights, and why not just one night?
That, that was mine because, and the reason is that, I mean, it's just people coming in and I have them surrounding me as I've told a million times, and just having, you know, like if one set of people comes in one, on a Friday night. And this will also go toward the question on the hours in which we're saying you have to check in. So people come in during the week or whatever. If it's during the week and you're working, and a lot of us are working during the week and people are vacationing, they come in at nine o'clock or whatever. And then they unload for half an hour, whatever long it takes, and the doors are slamming back and forth, up and down, lights are on. People are making more noise and then, you know, they settle in. And so, and that happens the next night. And so my thinking was that if you had at least two nights, you'd get a little bit of break from this, especially on weekends where you wouldn't have people coming in, you know, every other, every night, because that is a disturbance. And it, and it is different than like just right, you know, if you had neighbors, you know, a lot of times you want to say, well, what's the difference of the, of, you know, just having neighbors and having an STR, well, this is definitely one of them. Your neighbors aren't coming in every night and unpacking all of their stuff and getting settled into a building. So.
Yeah. And then a cleaning crew coming in between. I think that's reasonable to say. And maybe that goes in the narrative to just say you want to reduce the number of room turns, right? Because it, it's like having two families next to you for a weekend instead of one, or possibly even three. Yeah?
Right. Yeah.
I think if it's like in a purpose statement, to just kind of say that it's, that it, you know, it's, it's preferential to, you know, just res, you know, your quiet enjoyment in a residential neighborhood to just have, you know, one check-in, one checkout on a weekend. Because otherwise you've got a cleaning crew in there too.
Right. That's good language, Matt. Reducing the number of rooms.
Is not, is an alternative, if we wanted to say one night, we'd have to say there needs to be a break so that you don't have them every night. So if you have someone for one night, then you can't have someone for another.
I think, I think the simpler we can make it, the simpler we can make it, the better, right? The easier it is to comply with a, with simpler guidelines.
Okay. And oh, this was one of our questions. It was properties owned by corporations, LLCs, et cetera, can't be used as short-term rentals. We couldn't define, we couldn't define, et cetera. Marie looked up in a number of places. So is everybody fine? I'm going to take that word out.
I think that we've hit the things that we were, we were concerned about with the language that we have.
Corporations and LLCs, and we didn't, we could not define it, et cetera. So we're taking that out. Okay. All right. This is a question of Stephanie's. The host or agent must, we said, must live within the boundaries of the village at the time the STR is occupied. And Stephanie is saying residency location of the agent or responding hosts need not be in the village provided that they're responsive as we need them. So I changed the, the word in the last sentence there from and/or to or. So host and our agent must live within the boundary of the village at the time the STR is occupied or must be available at all times to respond to a person on site within 20 minutes. Does that makes, is that okay with everyone?
I think you could, I think you could just have it be within 20 minutes regardless of where their residence is. I think Stephanie's right.
I think if you put it your way, Fran, then that would mean that if you lived in the village, you didn't have to respond in 20 minutes.
That's what I was just thinking.
Gotcha. All right. How's this? Host or agent must, let's take that must out of there. Be available at all times to respond onsite within 20 minutes. Is that good? Yeah. And you can change that from must to shall. Must should probably be replaced by shall in all cases. Okay. 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 The, the record of number of guests, though, the question is, is it just a head count with no identifying details? Or do we want to have more information? They said the host or.
I'm sorry, I, I, that's not very clear the way I wrote it. I, my, my point there was basically that I just hope we're not keeping any identifiable information of people, you know, just head counts. And I think that's all you want.
Oh, okay. Shoot, that's what I was.
Yeah, because I, you know, we don't want to have records where we have a data breach and they're saying, why are you keeping these records? And, you know?
Right.
Okay.
So just for the record, I was, I was just against having any kind of record being kept by the short-term rental owner.
But I guess this is to enforce the, the 60 days or whatever you guys land on, right?
Exactly. That's why it's, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. If you don't, if they don't think you're watching, they might not behave. Just a thought.
Gee whiz. Funny thing about that. Okay. An S, a host show prominently display where invisible to who? At all times, the contact names and phone numbers of both the host and the agent, along with a list issued by the Village of Emergency Services, et cetera, et cetera. So where is this displayed?
On the interior.
At the front door, on the inside, front.
Yeah. My question is whether or not it was for the renter or whether or not it might even be for people that, you know, so say the agent doesn't respond in 20 minutes. Are you supposed to be able to go to the house and see who the agent is? You know, if you're the neighbor, I, I don't think that.
The agent is listed on the permit application.
Right.
So we don't need it. It's more for the renter.
So it's for the person inside the house, right? That was, I'm sorry, I didn't, this, this wasn't properly, you know, very clear either, so.
So the code for my long-term rental requires me to hang this information by the primary door.
So, so anybody can, from the street can walk up, right?
What?
So anybody on the street can walk up?
No, no. So that, so that it's inside.
Okay, gotcha.
But that it's consistently, so that across the city, they're consistently located by the front door. So it becomes a place that people know to look.
Gotcha.
Do we want to, do we want to define this or clarify this?
I would.
Yeah, I think we should put it somewhere.
Display.
Primary entrance, inside, interior, primary entrance or something.
Right next to the needle point of welcome.
Yeah, exactly.
Are you doing those?
He's doing them right now while we're on Zoom. You can't see his hands.
Oh, show prominently display on the wall adjacent to the primary entrance at all times. The contact is that, I don't, is that worded okay or?
That's good. Beautiful.
Works. Okay.
Should it be another right hand to the left-hand side?
Doesn't matter. All right. Two documents that confirm, Matt said tax return. I thought it was a good point. I know Kathleen, you had an issue with information. We're not looking for information. You can black out anything on the tax return other than your name, address.
I feel more comfortable with that. I just wondered if people would hesitate being asked by a local government for their tax return.
I know, I, I don't, I don't disagree. I just, you know, I just look at those other things and go, I can make any of those look like I, that's my primary residence, right?
Right. That's the discussion we've had too.
I mean, and it, we need two and we're going to give them four. So if we add tax return to this. Why don't we make a tax return and then one of the others?
Do we want to require the tax return?
Yes, that's the only way that we know that it is their primary residence. I think that's the only one that, yeah, that actually is clear.
Yeah.
So on that, we should maybe describe the eager state you can, with, I don't know, redacted or somehow.
Redacted, right.
We don't want to see your numbers.
Although it'd be interesting.
Yeah, exactly.
Federal, federal tax return?
Doesn't matter, does it?
And you have to use your primary address on, you know, on both, so. This is kind of a John question, how you get it without getting too much and having a record you don't want to be storing.
I, I find it, I find it interesting that many of the points that you raised, I would have expected John to raise, and he didn't. So it makes me concerned that maybe we should have him look at it again.
Well, we will tell you, I will tell you, I have, I work with lawyers all the time and they constantly tell me I shouldn't have been a lawyer. And I said, I don't want to be a lawyer.
Well, I just, I hope that he's paying attention to think, the things he should be paying attention to as he's reviewing is the point.
Well, I think a lot of times they just don't want it, they don't want to guide the process too much. That's kind of the one, I think they think they're doing the right thing by letting the board take their own direction, right? And then they get paid to defend you. So. If need be. But certainly, yeah, I mean, like I said, I would just run all these by him directly. I find with John, it's just best to ask directly. What about this? I'm worried about this. I mean, that's the way I deal with my general counsel is here's what I want you to look at and how I want you to look at it.
What was sent to John months ago doesn't bear any resemblance to what we have now.
Yeah, exactly.
Long ago that we sent it to.
So we have to go back and reconfirm with him.
Yeah.
This chapter. And the insurance amount was, I believe we, we talked to Karen on this. I know we got this number from either. I'm pretty sure you're right.
I just, the, for what it's worth, the Nelsonville liability insurance requirement is 500,000 per occurrence. And we have 200,000, right?
That's low.
No, we have 2 million. Sorry.
500,000 is too low.
Yeah, usually million, million.
I was reading the wrong number of zeros on our number. Sorry.
Wow, they only have half million?
Yeah.
That doesn't go very far anymore.
Doesn't go very far.
No.
Sadly.
Okay, moving down, um, the indemnification and hold harmless agreement, I'm pretty sure this did come from John.
It did. I think so too.
I got this directly. Well, actually I sent him, I sent him what I found as an indemnification statement. And he said, what I had was perfect. So this is what it is. Okay, the shared driveway, I agree with Stephanie's comment on this. It should be, it should be a affirmative statement. And the host with a shared driveway must include with the host's application, a letter of support from each property owner who shares the driveway. It really should say a letter from.
I would take Stephanie's language straight there. A letter containing an affirmative statement that the neighbor agrees to the use of the shared driveway by STR guests.
I would think that what we would want is a letter from the, the, the shared driveway person.
Yes, right.
Yeah. Letter from each property owner who shares the driveway.
And that includes an affirmative statement.
Stating that. Does that work? What if you. Who shares a driveway with the host, stating that they agree to the use of the shared driveway by the STR guest. Yes. Specifically states that the letter comes from the neighbor. Right. Okay. That comes in. All right. Public lottery system, is this a consideration of how the lottery is administered to ensure equity of access in subsequent years to applicants who are not drawn in the prior years? Well, that's, that's a rough question because, um, I mean, it's going to be the same lottery every year. So I mean, to me, that's equity of access. Everybody has the same chance. You may not get pulled.
So I don't know. We discussed this on the board and I, and I've discussed it with Marie too. I, I get what they're, what all the members felt strongly that there should be some preference to people, let's call them last year's losers, right? But that you can't really do that then, because then it's not a lottery. Though last year's losers will always be next year's winners until you get, you know, until you get to 38. So it doesn't, I don't think there, and that's the, and, and I didn't have that clarity until Marie and I were discussing later, when the board and I discussed it was that, okay, you can bring that up as a question, but I have no idea how you administer it, right? And afterwards, I'm just like, oh, you, there is no way to administer it. It would be a separate lottery where the losers last year win until, until you get to 38, right? And if you don't, then obviously then you move on to then another lottery. So I don't think there's any way to administer that.
And then you standard possibility that you'll get sued by last year's winners because they, one year they don't think is enough. And they want to, you know, they've put money into this. They want to continue to do this.
Well, and, and, and that was the board's concern too. Like there was a lot of comment about, are they going to think it's rigged? And I said, well, I don't know that you can really manage to people thinking something's rigged. I understand the concern. But, you know, they always keep losing. Well, that's what they call luck, right? And chance. And I, I think that I don't think.
If it's done, if it's done in a public session or done via Zoom, depending on how we go, you can see them, right? It's just like the balls popping up on the lottery. You see it drawn in front of you.
Yeah.
That's, I, that's the way I would recommend doing it rather than in the clerk's office on a Tuesday.
Yeah. So, okay, so back to the same question. And should the method and process of the lottery be defined within the law? Do we need to define that here?
I think they've raised a good point in the same way that above the, the, the logic of how we arrived at the number seems more defensible if the rationale is transparent.
Yeah, like in the purpose statement, you could say that you, that, you know, if you, the, if you restrict it but want to provide equal access, therefore you feel the best way to do that is to have a, have a lottery, right? And the lottery will be held like this, right? And like Kathleen was saying, conducted like this, to be conducted in the, you know, in the village hall, you know, maybe at night, so anybody can attend or whatever. And, you know, the first 38 are drawn and then the next, you know, I, I imagine you're drawing a few extras in case people don't pass inspection, right? So I think it's worth, and I think Stephanie raises a good point because Stephanie manages contracts and looks at this. I think that's a really good point to say, you should really just say exactly what you're doing, right?
And what we plan to do is just draw 38.
Okay.
For the first draw. If they fail the inspection, then we would draw more.
It seems it to me, I mean, look, I mean, it's whatever you guys would do, because then you already have the hopper set up and you can just alternate one, alternate two, alternate three, alternate four, as opposed to going back to a setting where you're drawing. You know, but just whatever you think.
Okay, but if, if you look at C, once you draw the first one, it fills a slot in the, in the table. If the second one is on the same street, it gets rejected, right? So the, 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 the process is, as stated, 38 are drawn.
Yep.
If the first one that's drawn is on street one, and the second one is drawn is street two, street one, then the second one gets rejected.
Right.
But then I think the question later on is what if somebody drops out in the middle of the year or whatever? Then, and then you have to do a whole new lottery or it doesn't get filled? Or I don't know.
I mean, to Lara's question, what happens if an approved STR drops out? I mean, I think.
I just having alternatives, I can't, I don't see how that would hurt if you had numbers that these three will be considered if, I don't know, unforeseen reasons.
It seems more transparent that way.
What that is, if somebody drops out from, say, High Street and High Street's only allowed one. Then you can only leave High Street blank. Are we going to have 38? And so we have to keep pulling until somebody. And so we have to keep pulling until somebody else comes out from High Street. So what if we pull somebody that's on a street that we already have filled according to the chart? As alternates, you know, you don't know where the alternates are going to fall. And that's, that's sort of a little bit crazy because of the fact that there's only so many persons per street.
So are we, uh, just so that my thinking is clear? I, I, it seems as if the planning board was suggesting moving away from the, the sort of specific chart. But are we, are, have, have, are we feeling as if that chart can stay so long as the rationale?
I haven't seen.
Or are we moving away from the chart and thinking of a different linear?
I haven't seen anything that says we're moving away from the chart, not yet. Yeah, we're staying with the chart.
It's in there. But it's your decision. Obviously, it's just our, you know, just our comment.
Yeah. No, I think, I think this chart made sense to us after we agonized over a million other reasons. So pulling alternates can be a little strange if you end up pulling four alternates and none of them fit into a space that's available if someone drops out.
Yeah, I would say if somebody, if somebody drops out, gee, we're now left with 37 and that's what we.
Yeah, I think that's probably the easiest.
Yeah, until the end of the, the period.
Because it refreshes every X period, whether it's a year.
One year, two years, or whatever.
Okay.
All right. No exterior lighting, um, the dwelling should be permitted from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Is this more limiting than the underlying code? Okay, and I didn't go back and look at the lighting code, so I don't know. Is this because it's thought that the use isn't comfortable?
The, the, I believe that the current lighting code does not have time limits on exterior lighting.
I think you're right, Marie. But we talked about the, I don't know, may, maybe the way we originally talked about it isn't defensible because of the point that, that Matt raises, that it's more restricted than the underlying code. But we were talking about, it's in the same way we talked about, I think, the same way we talked about not having people checking in after nine o'clock. We were thinking that it'd be great, good to encourage low lighting and sleeping hours. I mean, it is, it is a business use. It's not a.
A lot of, yeah, a lot of the codes definitely had this, this type of wording in it.
Now, as, as it turns out with the, the proposed code, exterior lighting cannot, uh, you can't have any light trespass with exterior lighting, which says that exterior lighting on my property cannot trespass
Right.
onto my neighbor's property, but that is not the current code.
And that's also different than what's being pointed out here. This is about time. That's about, that's about lightfall and spread of light.
Do we want to reword this to say no exterior, uh, light can trespass?
The light trespass is not currently part of.
Right, I understand that.
I'm comfortable with it as it, as it is, I think, because it isn't a normal residential use. It's a, it's an income property and a rent, and a rental um, that has a likelihood for impact on neighbors.
On, on, in the B1 zone, um, there is exterior lighting all along Main Street.
That's a good point, Fran.
So I'm not sure.
So what are we doing?
We want to.
I think we should leave it as is. I think it's going to be very, very hard to enforce anyway that people who are renting these places are not going to be worried about lighting and that, keeping it simple is, is the best thing we can do.
So you say, you say leave it as is, or you cut, cut for a second. I didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I think leave it as is till the public hearing, um, because it's, it's going to be hard to enforce anyway. And let's just see what people say. We might have to take it out altogether.
Good.
Fine with that.
Okay, STR probably may not be used to host parties or other gatherings or events. Um, Matt's question.
During the rental period, it should say.
Yeah.
That's, that was a good catch.
Yeah, so the owner can, I mean, even if the owner has a loud party, it gets to a certain point where the neighbors are going to complain anyway. But some people do rent their properties for people who they know are going to have parties. So what do we want to add here during the rental period?
During the rental period. And did we, do we call out anywhere, um, examples like such as, do we want to say parties or events? So that you don't have someone, I can't think of a property in the village where you'd want to do it, but hosting a backyard wedding kind of thing. Well, gatherings or events, parties or gatherings or events, I guess we're good.
I don't.
As long as it says during the rental period.
We okay with that addition I made there? Everybody?
Yes.
Okay, check-ins and non-loud between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Seems we should follow the existing noise and lighting hours if concerns impact. Marie, you said there's no, what is the noise regulation?
The noise regulation is not after nine o'clock at night and not before, and it just, now it depends upon weekends. Nine o'clock at night is, uh, at seven days a week. On weekdays, 7:00 AM. On weekends, 8:00 AM.
Okay, so we're pretty much in line.
Yes, we're very much in line.
Except for weekdays. We okay?
I would just leave it at nine to eight.
Okay, moving down. Enforcement, 1011, it shall be the duty of the police officer, Stephanie, requirements and restrictions under this chapter should be identified as enforced by either the code enforcement officer or the police department. Should we add the code enforcement officer here?
The code enforcement officer's enforcement responsibilities occur prior to the issuance of the permit. The code enforcement officer does the inspection, does the drive-by to make sure that the, the number is visible, that there are the driveway spaces that are required. The police department is the organization who will be called if there's excessive noise, if there are problems at the site. The code enforcement officer would not be doing that.
And we discussed, we discussed. Officers are on duty all the time and the code enforcement officer is part-time.
Well, it has nothing to do with that. It's that the code enforcement officer's responsibility
Is different.
is just to make sure that the property conforms to the, the law.
And they're additionally.
So the way this is reading enforcement, it shall be the duty of the, um, Village of Colespring Police Department to enforce this chapter. Now, I can understand what Stephanie's saying because to enforce this chapter may mean, um, you know, there isn't a proper lighting. I mean, after, after the permit is issued, maybe the exit sign goes out or the, or the alarm goes out or something to that effect. Something internal, um, that is the code enforcement officer's responsibility, because this doesn't say just her noise or lighting. This just says, uh, to enforce this chapter.
Right. If, if something, if, if, if the owner of the property decides to board up an exit window, I would not expect the police department to enforce that. But at the same time, we don't send the CEO back to properties to re-inspect them multiple times during the period of the permit.
So who would, who would deal with a boarded up window?
Um, I, I don't know that we would know about it, other than if a neighbor says, oh, my goodness, look at that.
But what would be the, would there be a downside to what, I, I understand the, the, the question that Stephanie's raising and Fran is recognizing as well. Would it, would there be a downside to identifying both the building inspector and the police department here? Because in that case, in the case you just raised, Marie, it might not be for the police officers to follow up on, but the building inspector. And so the complaint might come to the police department and the police department might then refer it to the building inspector, right? So should it, is there any downside to adding that title there?
Enforcement, in my mind, enforcement means you are actively pursuing. The code, in my mind, the code enforcement officer has at most a passive role once the application has been approved.
What if, what if somebody has, is, is operating an illegal, you know, short-term rental, um, and, uh, so why wouldn't, and I know that Charlotte's actually been called to one, I believe, well, anyway, so what if, what if that happens? So someone's operating one, uh, who enforces that? The police go to the?
I, I thought we had, um, the fines in the chapter, the fines. Didn't we?
We do have fines.
Yeah, the fines are there, 100-10.
But so then who?
If the complaint comes to, to Jeff, he would probably, I don't know whether he would send the police or whether it would be a, um, uh, I, I'd have to find out, uh, from him what the, what the action would be. Who, who would take that action?
You would think that if it were a building code issue like a blocked egress window, that it would be the code enforcement officer who would be responding.
Only if it was a complaint.
Right. And, and, but if we don't list her here, then, then.
She's not, it says, this says, only the police department can respond, as opposed to the police department or the code enforcement officer, which was.
See if you say the, or the code enforcement officer, I would read that as the code enforcement officer is responsible for noise and lighting and blah, 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 blah.
So maybe we need to be more specific. As appropriate.
Yeah, that works.
And then they can look at the village, the rest of the village code to determine if people need to know which is appropriate and which situation.
That's a good, simple solution.
Works. Is that, was that work to the duty of? I'm quite sure that reads properly, but it should be the duty of either the code enforcement officer or the police officer to enforce. All right, that may need some work. Okay, um, okay, so Stephanie has a question on the restricted set does not represent equal access to property rights under the law, um. I think we went through that, um, check the chart is what the chart is.
But we do need to go, it sounds like it would be helpful for us to go back and lay out the rationale for the identification of the chart.
We, I mean, we may want to, I mean, I think we put a lot of work into this. And, and we do have, you know, when we came up with the 38, that was, that was what we did.
Right, but I'm saying, what, what sounds like what the planning department, planning committee is asking for is to make their job of review and enforcement easier, to make sure that the rationale for the defense of the law is clear in the code. So fine if this is where you arrived, but give some understanding of how you arrived at this number, so it doesn't appear as if you just made them up, right? So that you describe the rationale for how the steps that we arrived, that we took to arrive at the 38.
Okay, so the, the problem with that is the planning board doesn't have any say in this. Nothing personal, planning board. But the zoning board and the planning board and the HTRB and the tree advisory board, none of them have any say in this.
But we're asking them for their advice and that's a bit.
That was because John, John, I, yes, for two, two, or, yes, the CEO and the planning board for their comments.
I think they, I think that, that, that response that they've given, that, that advice they've given is sound. Um, and it, and it.
Not arguing that, just saying, they don't, they don't enforce, they don't.
Understood, but they're, they're making a suggestion and I'm asking, are we going to take their suggestion to include some rationale for those numbers?
I don't think we should include a rationale in the, in, I, I mean, I think why we're doing the STRs, I don't think we need a rationale for every single, you know. I just think that's, you know, why, how, why is the enforcement like this? Do we explain that? Do we explain every one of them?
Well, because if you're, if you, if someone raises, someone decides to challenge this and says it's arbitrary, there's nothing, there's nothing that I can take from this code that indicates to me how this number was decided upon, other than someone making it up. And we, we know how we've arrived at this decision, right? So it's not arbitrary. It is defensible once we lay out why it is not arbitrary. So it doesn't have to be complex text or multiple paragraphs. It can be short sentences that explain, we arrived at this 38. You know, it doesn't seem to be like it needs to be, uh, overly complex, but that it provides some basis to support.
And do you see that in other law, in, in other chapters that they explain why certain numbers came up and why something is the way it is?
No, no.
I mean, if you want to look at, you want to look at the parking, uh, you know, parking permits and how we waive those. I mean, there's no rationale or explanation on all of that in there that I remember. And, and there are a lot of chapters that they don't explain. I mean, that there's, they determined what the law is and they don't have a rationale for. I mean, if you went to court, then you could, you know, say, this is how we came up with this and this is why.
The other, the other value in recording it as part of the ordinance is that that history is there, so that if a suit comes after these five people are no longer on the board, the rationale is retained.
We just go to the YouTube video.
That, no, that is true. I mean, it, it is good when everything's in the code, like the, I think the parking permits are a great example, right? For two reasons, you know, you know, that we do have to represent those selling spaces that don't exist. And then on the, the flip side of it is then when they were asked to be used for the expansion of residential, but the code doesn't clearly say that. You have to go back to all the introductory documents, you know, and then get, and do the research and then say, we don't want to set, you know, an unintended precedent. But just if I may, though, the, the planning board's issue with the allocation table is separate from the 38. It, it's also that the allocation table changes the equal access of the same use in the same district from street to street, block to block. And that could have unintended consequences of, you know, challenges, right? So the 38 saying 5% of the parcels, that's, that in, that in my mind, in the planning board's mind, is separate and apart from the access through the allocation table. And we're, we were most concerned about the allocation table being judged to be arbitrary because there's an R1, right? And there are impacts of this thing. And the purpose statement says there are negative impacts to a lot of them and clustering them. So you're going to really have to carefully explain how the allocation go, keeps from clustering, but doesn't provide it in, at some sort of inequity in the access to the use, right? Or conversely, that you have, I don't, you know, look, the arguments can come from both sides. I don't want them on my block. Why do I have a two block? And I, you know, and you're a zero block, right? You know, so I think that it, it, I am fairly sure that we'll be asked to explain the allocate, the logic of the allocation table at some point. Um, and so if they're separate, they're really, they're really separate issues. And Stephanie and Lara can speak if they, if they like. Cause they're, you know, we, we went into this a long time. But that's just, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, the, the cover letter that we did, kind of the broad overarching themes. You know, one of the whole paragraphs, you know, of the only four was about the concerns about the allocation table and the way it provides access to a use in a district, but in a way that I think that we feel could be determined to be arbitrary, right? I, I, again, that's not to say that you guys aren't spending a lot of time on it and trying to figure out how to do this. This is, this stuff's all new, right? So.
I think a lot of it had to do with, and, um, this has gone back a bit. That we looked at each street and the number of residences on that street. So maybe back to the seven or eight or something like that. I mean, if a street had X amount of residences, we didn't feel that there was enough to put a, put an STR. So we, we, we did have a number in mind and there was a number, I believe, seven or eight or whatever it was.
Exactly.
There's less than. There's less than X amount of residences on a street, then the street can't have an S T R, uh, that was part of that logic, and it depends on the street, the density of the street, the number of residences on the street, so, um, you know, we can probably, as we, as we redo the, um, purpose statement, maybe add something that relates to that.
I think that, uh, now, now I'm remembering that, or maybe you're, we're just thinking in two different ways. I, the number seven, I think came up with any street that had less than seven would not have.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we look at the charts.
The properties or how many, it was like, so most of the street without seven would, would not have because it would, you know, would change the character of that street. So you have Cherry Street with five or whatever number on it, Academy has, I believe, only two. Um, actual addresses, two or three, three actually, um, so do you want one of those to be an S T R? And, and I think that that's where, when we started, my first thinking was seven, and how many, how would, what number would we come up with if we use seven? How many would there be on each street? If you didn't, if anything, with seven or under was not allowed to have one because of the character issue.
And again, if in your, again, sorry, if in your purpose statement, you just, you just, you know, explain all that, right? That it's your attempt at addressing density and clustering, right?
Right, I think that, that's a good example of why we should ha, include it in the code, because if, every time someone asks, we go through this um, process, it's, it's not going to be, you know, very efficient, so if we just write how we came across that decision, it makes it a lot easier for everyone.
Well, it wouldn't be under the purpose then, would it? It'd be under the rationale.
It, it would be under, you could, you could do it under allocation, you could add a paragraph in under one hundred dash fourteen. But, but you would, I think what, to Matt's point, you're, you would want to, in, in the purpose, articulate the question of density and the impact of density of this use in neighborhoods, and that, that this ordinance intends to address the impact of dense, of density of short-term rentals. And then later, when you come back to allocation, lay out the rationale in short sentences in a short paragraph, and then lay out your table. Then your table become, then your table becomes logical, and then not, and it appears less as if it was pu, pulled out of thin air. I think the, the steps you went through, the, the steps you went through are.
I just don't see that in any other, I just don't see that in any other code, so I don't know why it would be here, and I know there would be questions on, on other codes and reasoning, so.
Clearly, it's hard to understand.
I remember looking at all codes, um, which we've looked at a lot, where there's rationale and reasoning why anything was implemented and became law.
Hi Laura. Can, can I just, um, interject a quick, uh, question? Also, just to say that regarding the table, I, you know, I, again, I agree with what Matt said, which is that we're not, we don't think that the process by which it was arrived at was arbitrary by any means, we're just worried about the unit of measure of block, I, I think I'm, I'm trying to articulate why I'm worried that it might come up for challenge from both sides. Is that the unit of measure of a block is not as, um, uh, what's the word, it doesn't seem as finite as a distance or.
Regular, maybe, regular.
But yeah, it, and, and even though we experience blocks, you know, they're, they're different. And so we're just worried that if you're on a, on a very tiny block that, by the method that you have determined on this table is allocated zero S T Rs, and you want to do an S T R, you might then challenge this situation. You're never allowed to participate in the lottery, even though you were, you've arrived at owning this property through a similar process in the same zone, right, in the same, uh, residential zone as your neighbor um, around the corner on a longer block, so we're, so that could come at it from that side, and then we're also worried that, you know, it creates the inequity from the other side for, um, those, um, blocks that will have, uh, more frequency of S T Rs because they're allowed one or two, um. So anyways, that was just, I just wanted to clarify that, that we were just worried about the challenges, or I, I felt strongly that that might pose some challenge and create some kind of disharmony, where a lot of the intent is to sort of create more, um, sort of intended, um, you know, just a everybody on the same page kind of, um, character to the neighborhood, so just wanted to explain that, if that helps, um.
Thanks Laura.
Yeah, we did talk a lot about blocks and what they mean, so it definitely has, has been discussed, but, um, it's, it's good to have the input.
And, yeah, I, it, you can tell there, a lot of thought went into this, so it was, it was a lot to wrap our hands around as well, so.
Well, I'm not sure where, where we've landed on this, I mean.
Um, that's the end of the comments, I guess. Um, I think Jeff has created a resolution, which we're not quite ready for yet for the public hearing, so we I guess rewrite the, um, purpose statement, um, and look at it one more time.
Yes.
You know, see what we need to add for, uh, comments.
So I make them, I make a motion to table the resolution.
Yes, I'll second that, hopefully next week.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed?
So we should move on, um, from chapter one hundred. So we have to add a method of how we're doing the lottery, change the purpose statement. Add some, some explanations of, of how we came up with our chart and our numbers, and then, other than that, I think the rest of it is done. So we're, every time I think we're almost there, we're not almost there, but we're close.
I thought there were lots of great, there's a lot of great feedback that was really helpful.
Man, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Thank you to the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were, they gave it a lot of time, sorry, it took a little time, we had some scheduling conflicts, but, uh, they definitely wanted to go through it pretty, uh, pretty closely, because it's an important law for all of us, it really is about residential life. All right, thanks so much, everybody, be well.
Thanks Matt, take care.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, I have, I have, um, we're working off of the one that, that the, uh, planning board has sent us, Marie, do you want to move that into our files so that we can work on it?
You want to work, you want to work off the planning board one? The, the planning board one was very old.
Oh, okay.
So, so, so it, I don't think it had the table in it.
Yeah, it has a table in it.
But Parrot Street was misspelled in multiple, multiple, multiple places. I can certainly move it in, but I don't think we should work off it.
Okay, um, so maybe we should just cross-reference what's in there.
I'll move it in tomorrow.
And I guess label it Planning Board P B or something.
Yeah.
Okay, next thing on tonight's agenda is fences, we remember fences.
I thought we were done with this.
Yeah, I think it just needs a final, um. Okay, oh, there was, there was just, um, two paragraphs that were moved, or one paragraph that was moved, it's in forty-two dash three. Uh, we moved G up to above the picture. So, and I think that was the only thing we really needed to, uh, get an approval on. It talks about fence, offenses shall be maintained to good repair, and it goes with other notes about, um, uh, the owner's property and how they take care of their fences, so we, that just got moved up.
Okay, Fran, I noticed that the, we have different fonts, so I'll go through tomorrow and change all the fonts.
Okay, other than that, I think everything else is, okay, the pictures, uh, have names and they're all in, and there's nothing else in this, so this should be good to go. Okay, so fences, is, okay. Just put a note. So Marie, once you change the fonts, I'll move it over.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Next on the agenda is chapter forty. Chapter forty is building construction, uh. I think there's still some open stuff on this, I cleaned up a bit of it, there's still some stuff that I think we're, are we still waiting for Charlotte on something? So we just determined we were going to make our own decisions?
Uh, I, I, we, we decided we were going to make our own decisions, um. And I still haven't gotten to Charlotte on the, uh, building permit, uh, and notarized affidavit. Uh, I've, so I'll have to follow up on that.
All right, so we want to pass on this?
Yeah, I would, uh, you've, you've, you've updated a couple of the village, uh, the, uh, references to village.
Right, and I, I don't believe that I, um.
I don't think all of them are done, I mean, you've done a great job on it.
Okay.
But I need to go back and, and do some more on that.
Right, so forty we're going to hold.
Right.
Chapter thirty-six, brush grass and we, uh, weeds.
I thought we agreed on that.
I thought we did too.
We did too, I don't know why it ended up on, uh, I see it on Jeff's agenda. I don't see any problem with it, I think it's.
Yep, what has to be, we have to go through trees, one twenty-two.
Well, there are still items that unless I'm looking at.
There are two different versions of brush grass and weeds. And, and they're dated, so take the, the newest date, I believe newest date is July, um. Let me see.
The one in July.
The newest date is three, two, twenty-one.
Oh, I got it, yep.
Okay, the July one is not good anymore, so the three, two, twenty-one, I think we agreed on last time, so it should be. I don't see any other changes, so I think that's good to go.
That's great.
On one twenty-two, which is, uh, trees. Um, and you had, uh, a comment in there on page three, and it should, it, the, the actual word is filed. F I L E D, not field.
Okay.
So, so.
One twenty-two I hadn't opened, okay.
That looks like there's a bunch of just formatting things that need to be accepted.
Right, yeah, which I'm going through now.
So on public tree.
So it should be filed, if I.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, for purposes not laid out, on a filed subdivision. Okay. File subdivision plaque, got it, all right, so that was cleaned, uh, and basically spacing. And then on one twenty-two, for tree advisory board, um, down in the bottom of section A. All appointments to fill vacancies shall be for the unexpired term, uh, delete subsequent appointments, including the position of. Okay, so then the next sentence should be, the mayor shall nominate said members and shall designate its chairperson subject to the approval of the board of trustees.
Yeah.
Each subsequent appointment for members of the tree advisory board shall be upon recommendation by the tree advisory board to the village board. So that sounds like what is normal.
Yes, yes, this is essentially what other boards have.
Okay, so that takes care of that.
And then Dave's, um, Dave's comment, uh, changed it.
Right, um, okay, so let me see. So you, I don't, let me just go back and look. Dave's comment is, I don't believe this is how any of our other board's chairperson is chosen, it says, the mayor shall nominate said members and shall designate its chairperson to the, subject to the approval of the board of trustees.
Right, and, and maybe I've put it out of, out of sequence here, but the last sentence in that paragraph, each subsequent.
Appointment of chairperson shall be made by the mayor, subject to approval, true. Is that good, Dave?
Yes, fine.
Do you want to move it or leave it as it is?
Well, up at the top, it's the initial composition of the tree advisory board.
Right, yeah, usually it's not the subsequent appointment, or, well, that's for the chairperson though.
Right, so if you look at the last sentence, each subsequent appointment for chairperson shall be made, will be made by the mayor, subject to the approval of the board of trustees.
Okay. So that's okay, as is. Okay, it's space. The appointment, delete the appointment, ask the chairs for one, okay, that comes out with the period.
At the top of the page, Fran, it just says tree, right below trees, there should be a space, or then there's a big space between.
Yeah, that's all sort of weird.
Yeah, I don't know.
Looks good.
That looks good.
Hey, look at that, it happened.
You do nice work.
Getting good at this, okay, uh, F tree inventory. Tree advisory board shall be responsible for annually updating that, those tree inventory consistent with the tree inventory maintenance recommendations. Okay. Should this be capitalized? Okay, so we got it as tree inventory, and that's a defined term, right, tree inventory?
I believe so, hold on a second. No.
Yes, it is, yeah, okay. All right. Formatting is weird, oh, yeah, it's, it's, a lot of the formatting got really weird, Heidi. I guess it will get for, reformatted as it goes to, um, I guess before the, um, before the public hearings, right?
There you go, whatever you did, just fixed it.
Yeah, I know, somehow or another it does, for me, I'm not sure where, there's mostly a blank page.
Probably there's a page eject in there somewhere.
Yeah, I hate, I hate that, I tried to eliminate a lot of those. Delete section, yeah, there was a section for formatting thing. Okay, that gets deleted. Delete the space. Yeah, these things somehow are the just, nope, that's not what I wanted. Yeah, the condition. Villages sidewalk.
It's, it's in the general references.
Okay. Injuries, no presence or place or maintain upon any tree lawn, any materials. What is a tree lawn?
This area between the sidewalk and the street.
Okay.
The tree lawn is that part of the public right of way, not covered by sidewalk, lying between the property line and the edge of the pavement, including but not limited to the strip of land between the edge of the street and the sidewalk. It's a defined term.
Okay. Are we changing he or she today? I think we had decided that's what we were going to do. Chapters should be enforced by the code enforcement officer of the village, and in addition there to, that always sounds weird to me, because they is to me is plural, and he or she is, is the one, is singular, so.
It's just the direction that language has gone.
Yeah, I know.
I don't, it's, I don't like it either, but it feels weird coming off your tongue, but it is what it is. Oh, I'm, I'm being handed soup, sorry, I'm going to shut off my camera. But I'm here listening.
All right, um, so one twenty-two looks like it's done.
I agree.
Other than some formatting and cleaning up. So, okay, so one twenty-two is done.
Great.
Okay, now we move on to one twenty-six, do we want to get on to one twenty-six, which is a bear to look at? Or do we want to, do we want to get started on it, do we want to?
Let's get started on it, we have close to a half an hour left.
Oh, Marie, you're a party pooper.
I, I'm sorry, I'm running out of time.
I know.
What other chapters? What other chapters are there left, just this?
One thirty four.
One thirty four.
One, one thirty and one thirty four.
Not bad, and then we need to talk about what.
Oh, I didn't realize one thirty was still there, okay.
We need to talk about what?
We had done one thirty, but Dave put some comments in it, which we have to address.
Dave, you're not supposed to do that.
They come off.
Not fair. Okay, one twenty six V and T. We got through part of this, we're moving down, we're moving down to page. Okay. Down to page eleven.
Right.
This is the stuff that I went through with Larry and Tom about a million years ago.
So you just want to accept everything, Fran?
Um, I want to know, some of it I don't want to just accept. I did, I did make a change to one, one twenty six twenty two, where it said shall be punished by a fine and or imprisonment as determined by New York State V and T law, because whatever we had in our code didn't make any difference anyway, because Tom doesn't go by that, he goes by the state code.
Gotcha.
So that, got you.
That change was made, that's good.
Under the table on page. Under one twenty six twenty three, the penalties now, and I did not, I made some changes on these. Basically, Tom's recommendation was. That the basic. I'm sorry, I thought I had everything organized, and I did not.
If it's, if it's determined by the state, then why include a table at all? Why not reference the state?
No, no, this is not determined by the state.
Say that again?
By the state.
This is not determined.
Violations are determined.
Moving violation.
Violations are determined by the state, and that's the state's number, parking penalties are ours.
Okay.
And so therefore the chart, basically Tom said the basic parking penalty is for, you know, parking zones and some some similar ones, so those are the basic twenty five dollar and expired inspection. Let me see, and then anything over that, I'm trying to get my, my sheet to get this stupid thing out of the way. Anything more than that should should be higher fines, so seasonal parking. We went from forty five to fifty, and for the feds pay, and for thirty days and sixty days was a seventy five dollar one. The other piece of this is Tom said, what's on this chart basically is what people will pay if they get the ticket and they mail in the check. If they want to go to court, then he makes the determination, and he has more information than the police officers do, because he can say whether or not this is a third, fourth, or tenth offense, and he can fine accordingly. If it's a first offense, he may be a little bit more lenient, but these are our basics, and these are the ones that are on the tickets. So the no parking zone. Is like the fifty, forty five to fifty into the seventy, fifty to seventy five, these are okay. He did want us to raise, and both he and Larry requested or suggested that we raise parking in the crosswalk, which I did. And parking in handicap space, which I did, because he said those were, those were worse offenses. So, so we can, I mean, I can just go through and clean this table up, and then we can take another look.
That'd be good.
Okay, so we could do that. The other things that are in this, other than the fines, as we move down. Okay, one-way roadways, this is where we we were adding some things, so we have to determine whether or not we still want this. It's on page fifteen, one twenty six twenty eight. Yeah, these are one, one-way roadways, and we were going to add. This is Cedar and Orchard, I believe, make all those streets one-way all the time.
Locust.
Locust, did we, did we determine those were, they seemed to be okay, and we had decided to do that. So that went through. Okay, there was a new entry for prohibited turns and intersections.
I'm sorry, on one way, Howden, Howden is a new entry.
Right, Howden is a new entry, we're gonna make it one-way west.
Yep.
The entire length.
Yep, and railroad, railroad is another one.
Railroad is the one we're gonna have a question about.
Yeah, I have, I'm not convinced on railroad.
I'm not either.
Railroad was, um.
What's the problem?
The problem with railroad is that it makes Depot Square a problem. If we make it one-way going west, Depot Square becomes a dead end, and then if we make it one-way going east, then you've got the problem of turning on stone, which is what we were trying to avoid by making it west.
I think it's really problematic, people already have trouble figuring out how to get turned around on Main Street, and if you make it to the bottom. If you miss the turn to go onto Lun Terrace, which would take you over, the only option you have is to go through Depot Square and up the hill. I understand the no truck thing, but I think that the option need to be no trucks, trucks prohibited, and putting that sign further out.
So you make a U-turn at the bottom of Main Street, which is what most people do.
But if you are not familiar with the street pattern in the village, and you don't think, oh, this is an appropriate place for me to stay, make a U-turn, you're gonna turn right.
And so you put a one, a dead-end sign. At the entrance to railroad.
So then, get into parking spaces there.
I'm sorry?
How do people get in the parking spaces if you put the one, put the dead-end at the, at the Main Street intersection?
You put, how do they get into the parking spaces? They drive?
Get in knowing that it's a dead end, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, we have to put very, very clear, much clearer signs about trucks. It's got to be on the other, on the east. On the northeast corner, on the east corner of Depot Square, rather than on the west, up on the wall, where nobody can see it, it's got to be very clear.
That's what I'm saying, the signage, trucks turn because the signage stinks.
If you go down, if you take a look down there, it is really difficult to put a sign somewhere where people are gonna look at it. I went down there when people complained a while back, take a, take a look down there, and.
Yeah, I know.
It's not an easy spot to put a sign up anywhere.
Because there isn't a visual focus.
Well, it's wide, it's it's extra wide, you have parking on one side, and then the other has like perpendicular parking.
Can it be on Main Street and just says trucks cannot turn here, or no outlet for trucks?
Or something.
It's gonna be on the, on the corner of Main.
I don't know, go down and take a look, I think.
Yeah, I know.
You need to take a look at it, because.
If we make.
It's really difficult.
That seems more viable to me, Fran, putting a no-truck turn, some sort of no-truck turn sign on.
The certain sizes of the trucks.
Right, and leaving, leaving railroad as an uphill one-way.
Railroad was a one-way in nineteen ninety one, that law was repealed in nineteen ninety three. But, you know, the problem is, you know, we have to keep trucks off of railroad going to stone, because there's no way they can navigate the turn onto stone.
So if you don't allow trucks, well, you have to allow trucks to turn on to Depot Square to make deliveries.
Yeah, and then they, you know, but those.
But then they're expected to back out?
Well, what do they do at Food Town?
That's.
They're told they have to back out. The sign behind, the sign behind Food Town says you cannot navigate these streets, you have to back out the way you came in.
So do we, is that a sign we need somewhere at the entrance to Depot Square?
I would recommend everyone take a walk down there, I'll say this one more time, and see where you think a sign would actually go, because I think that's a great idea, but it's, it's, I don't know if you can put one there where the trucks will actually see it, it's a really difficult spot.
But it sounded like, Dave, you were, you were advocating for not having railroad one-way going east.
Just wasn't convinced of having it one-way, I'm not like, of any, it's just something that I haven't decided on.
But you weren't advocating for one direction or the other, it was the question of one way.
There's one way with. So, if we could leave that one for now.
Sure.
Ask.
We can move on.
Down there and see what I'm talking about. Maybe we put a banner across, because that would be the only way, or one way, anyway, let's, let's move on from this.
Okay, one twenty six twenty nine prohibited transit intersections, a new entry at Benedict. In the Food Town Plaza, this is just what we're talking about. So, in accordance, no person shall make a turn of the kind designated going east or west. Left or right, Benedict, I'm trying, I'm trying to place this, Marie.
This is where the no-entry sign on Benedict is.
Oh, okay.
At the Food Town Plaza.
So you mean going into the.
In, going into.
Into the parking lot.
Right.
Got you, so are we allowed to do that, because that's a private? I guess we are the same way we, the same way we do with.
With Butterfield.
Butterfield.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
So I'm not.
So it's basically.
Can you explain that one again? So we're talking about.
Into the parking lot.
I'm Benedict going into the Food Town parking lot.
Yeah, that's the exit, the entrance is off of Main Street, or off of Route ninety, the exit is on Benedict.
And so what are we doing here, prohibiting turns?
Prohibiting anybody turning into the, into the.
Into the Food Town Plaza.
And there's no signs there now?
There's one sign.
There are, but everybody ignores them.
So it's not new, we're just.
Yeah, and we're just memoir, it's the intersection, at the intersection of, not into Food Town Plaza, it's the intersection of or with Food Town Plaza.
You've, you've lost me for some reason, I'm not, I'm not following. If you're coming down, you're coming down Benedict, and you're going west, you, you're not, you can't turn into the parking lot.
Right.
And is, that's, that's where we're talking, that?
Yes, yes, or.
And go in there right now.
Correct.
Right, but it's not in our law.
It's not in our law.
Our laws.
Oh, okay, you got, you got, you, I didn't know.
It's not our law, so now we can.
One of those we put the signs up that we have no right to do. Like our fifteen mile an hour signs.
Yeah.
We've got them, yeah, although those two, those are always fun.
Okay, sorry about that, being.
That's okay, okay, U-turns prohibited, we added Cedar Street, Cedar, 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 West Cedar. So no U-turns on Cedar Street, oh, it's because we made it one-way.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. We didn't add, was it Howden? We need to add Howden too, right?
Yes, good point.
Because that's also one-way. Okay, um. So you turn a mountain from.
On that one, are you doing?
Say again?
And on the U-turns, if it's one-way streets, and we're taking Locust and, and Orchard.
Yes, Locust Orchard, and yes. And and B, did we add B as one-way?
Nope.
We might not.
Did we make B? All right, let me go back up.
Yes, we did, B we added.
Okay, right.
And then the other one is Orchard.
Yeah.
So Mountain is also added here.
Yes.
From Cedar to Locust, from Cedar to Locust, okay.
Right.
We added Orchard.
Now, we may be adding railroad in here as well, so do you want to put that in, Fran?
Okay.
So, if we go to through streets.
All right, just, just above that, U-turn shall be permitted on all other two-way streets, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fine, okay.
Except Main Street, though, right?
Yeah, except as maybe otherwise prohibited by law.
It's there.
Yeah. Okay, down to through streets.
Okay, so a through street is identified any, as in, as a street where there are stop signs erected at the entrances to that street. Now, Academy Street has. The, the entrance to Academy, which is Cherry, has a stop sign, Bank Street is not a through street. Because it has, sorry, it is, it is a through street because Parrot and Parsonage have stop signs at it. Chestnut Street has stop signs for every intersection along the street. Fair Street has two intersecting streets, they are both stop signs.
Fishkill Ave. Back up for a second, your comment on Chestnut is only a portion of Chestnut is a through street? There's a stop sign on Chestnut at the northern intersection of Chestnut and Route ninety.
Okay. Sorry. Let me find that comment.
It's right.
Right, right, there's a stop sign on Chestnut at the northern.
At the end of it, the, the extended loop, right, past.
So, but then that, that conflicts with Bank Street, which has multiple stop signs on it. So I don't think that Bank Street should be listed as a through street.
Stop signs at Parrot and Parsonage.
I, I think you're right, Marie.
So, okay, so there are stop signs on Bank Street, so Bank is not.
At, at Parrot and at Parsonage.
Okay, so Bank comes off.
Yeah.
The intersection you were referring to on Chestnut, do you mean by the apartments?
North of the apartments, but yes, where, where Chestnut intersects with ninety.
Across from Downey.
No.
No.
At, at the, at the other end of Chestnut, Chestnut does not, does not go along ninety, okay, it goes along ninety till Drug World, and then it takes a right.
Right, and that's what I mean, where it loops back around to the highway, there's a stop sign there, right?
There's stop, stop signs on, on either end of that portion of Chestnut Street, so Chestnut.
Is a through street from Main Street to.
That's just it, from Main Street to.
To what?
Drug World.
The Drug World, right?
Could you, can you designate a crosswalk? No, there isn't a crosswalk there. Um.
Would you say the entrance to Chestnut Ridge Apartments?
No, that's further, that's further. I can get the, I can get the street number of Joe Curdo.
Okay. All right, so we need to get a street number.
Yep.
I can grab it, I've got the list here.
Fair Street is good, Fishkill Ave is good. Forge Gate is good. High Street. High Street. Will no longer enter into Howden Street.
Those Howdens coming west, right?
Correct, so.
So High Street.
I, I would delete Howden Street and say entire street.
Right.
The Curdos are fifty-nine, Chestnut.
So is that the address we're looking for, fifty-nine?
If you want Curdo's address, that's Curdo's. If you want Curdo's address, that's Curdo's number, yeah.
Miss Curdo, poor Curdo.
The Joe Curdo. Deep house, the, the big house back far off next to Drug World where they have the little library set up in front?
Right, gotcha. Takes care of that. And we took this one out. I keep losing my folder. I keep getting, having to start all over again.
Do you want me to delete the road tomorrow?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Do you want me to delete that road tomorrow?
I'm back in. It should, if you, if you can, yes. I'm back in, but. Okay, so your question too, should we have Garden Church Rock be listed here? I don't think, I mean, Garden is, I mean, there's no intersection.
Right, Garden has no intersecting, so it's no, so there are none.
Church has no intersection.
Right, and Rock has no intersections.
Okay, so they don't.
Nothing it crosses.
There are no intersecting streets.
Okay. All right, so Fishkill, we're okay, Mountain, at the Mountain Avenue entrance, Forge Gate.
I have no idea what the street names are in there. If there are any street.
But is it, is it, is it the entire?
I believe the entire road that comes off of the Boulevard and goes to Lun Terrace. I believe that's one named road of Forge Gate Drive.
So why, why would that even be considered a through street?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
It says no through traffic. Yes, but that's a.
That's, that's.
That's something that the, that the condo association put up. I think we need clarity on whether it's a private street or not.
But one way or the other, um, a through street would be something that has other streets coming across.
Right, and it is not that.
And it does. Within Forge Gate, there is at least one more street that intersects with Forge Gate Drive.
There is?
Yeah.
Where? Just parking lots?
So you, um, as you come in off of the Boulevard and you begin to take your left, I believe there's a street on your right.
That's not a continuation of the Boulevard?
No, no, the Boulevard, no, the Boulevard ends at Campbell Avenue and at, it dead-ends prior to the railroad tracks.
But that, but, so twenty, the Boulevard is numb, is, the entrance to twenty, the Boulevard is across the street from that location you're talking about?
No, I'm, I'm talking about a location within the Forge Gate complex.
Those are actually streets or are they parking?
I don't think. I thought there was a street there.
It's a, it's a driveway and a parking area.
We'll, we'll have to check this, because I'm gonna.
You can take the baby out for a walk and look.
I will walk tomorrow. I walk through there all the time. I can't, but you know, I'll look again. It's possible. I just thought it was a driveway or something, but I'll, I'll look.
Okay.
Okay.
I always assumed it was the continuation of Campbell.
No. No, Campbell.
I don't mean Campbell. I mean.
The Boulevard, no.
The Boulevard.
Boulevard. Okay, Lun Terrace, High Street, we got Lun Terrace, um, at Forge Gate, yes, that's right. Main Street all, it's a through street.
I'm sorry, I, I just, I just had an error. What page are you on, Fran?
I'm on page nineteen.
Okay.
That road got deleted already, as I was going through. Okay, so Drug World became that. So we're at Lun Terrace, the Forge Gate, Main Street, all of this. Morris, excuse me, Morris Avenue, the entire street.
Do we want to highlight Lun, so we remember to go back to it? Or did you write check here?
I highlighted Forge Gate, which is the one we wanted to go back to. Lun is okay. Lun is a through.
Oh, I see, yep.
Okay, um, Mountain, the entire street?
No. There is a stop sign at the intersection with Craig Side and Locust. There's a, a stop sign on.
So it would really be, it would really be west of Locust, right?
West of Locust. Or, or.
No, east, east.
Make that entrance on Craig Side slash Locust.
Well, there, it's two different. There's a stop sign at at Chestnut, I'm sorry, at Mountain on the east side, the top side of Locust Ridge. And then there's a separate stop sign at the exit from the parking lot, the school parking lot. But that's not a street, that's a, the driveway.
What's a driveway?
At Craig Side.
It is a street.
Oh, because it's, because it's the tail of the, got it.
Tail of the one that got lost in the school. Okay, so Mountain Avenue is a through street from Craig Side Locust to the end.
Fishkill, to Fishkill.
But I'm saying Craig Side and Locust aren't the same thing. So why are we, why are we doing a dash like that? They're two different streets. It's through from Craig Side down. It's, and it's one stop sign to another between.
Locust is Locust, is Locust farther western Craig Side or Craig Side is farther western Locust?
Further east.
No, I'm, I'm looking down west.
Where are you standing?
She's standing at the top of.
You're standing at Mountain Avenue.
Right.
Locust, then Craig Side.
And then Orchard, then Locust. Where's Locust?
If I'm standing, looking down Mountain Avenue at the, at the top of, of Mountain Avenue, I first see Locust Ridge, which ends on this side, Craig Side, which ends on this side, and then Orchard, one more down.
But Orchard doesn't have a stop sign.
That is correct.
Correct, but I'm saying between Locust and, and Craig Side, it's not a, it's not a through street because there are two stop signs there. The, the through street begins at Craig Side and goes down to Fishkill.
I'm asking, okay.
At that one, we're at eight thirty-two, two minutes over the mark, so.
Let's finish the table.
I'm, I'm finished right now.
Good night.
I'm done.
Night.
Good night, all.
Night.
Okay.
Is someone gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We're not gonna continue? I mean, we've got two more entries.
Dave's gone. Oh, good. For him.
I'm good with two more.
So, so Northern Avenue is not an entire, the entire street. There's a stop sign at Church Street.
Yeah, really. Okay, so that, that's a question for another time because that stop sign to me doesn't belong there. But because there's nothing coming out and so why there is even a stop sign?
Because it was. It was happening there, it's right. Calm the traffic.
I know, I know why it was there, but is it a legal place to put a stop sign?
I, it's, why question it? It's there and it slows the traffic. Let it stay.
Because it's not a legal stop sign. A stop sign is, is, you can put children at play, you can put a million other things, but.
I, but I think taking away, why, I don't know.
Okay.
It was passed, it was, it was placed by resolution of a previous board.
I think so.
I think it was.
Okay, maybe it was. I didn't look. Okay, so now am I taking all, am I taking Northern out?
This one Seth was mayor. Aaron was on the board.
It's, it's, it's a through street from Fair to Church and then from Church to Morris.
Okay, these have to be redone.
Paulding Avenue is correct and the Boulevard is correct.
Now we're done.
Yep.
Okay.
So I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Done.
Hi.
Good night, all.
Good night.